Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The third regular session for the year 2025 is now called to order. Please rise for the opening prayer to be led by Honorable Tara Rabat Gaita, followed by the National Anthem, Provincial hymn and City hymn.
Let's bow our heads and feel the presence of the Lord in your Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit. Almighty and ever-living God, we gather before you today seeking your wisdom, guidance and strength. As we commence this regular session, we humbly ask for your blessings upon our leaders, that they may lead with integrity, vision and compassion. Grant us the patience to listen, the humility to serve and the courage to make decisions that will uplift and benefit our beloved community. May our discussions be fruitful and our intentions sincere and our actions just. In all that we do today, may we be instruments of your peace and justice. We ask this in your holy name, amen. In your Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit.
Mr. Secretary, you may proceed with the roll call.
Honorable Samuel Rodriguez, absent excuse, Honorable Delphine Miones, Honorable Tara Marie Rabat Gaita, Honorable Sina Princess Campos, Honorable Edmond Dupang Junior, Honorable Abilino Capinha Junior, Honorable Armand Valera, Honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara, Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang, Honorable Rogelio Papio, Honorable Baldilio Miones, Honorable Daniel Makaubos, Honorable Tomas Cebaleno, Honorable Lorenzo Leon Girabal.
Present.
Coro, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please proceed to the next item.
Reading and consideration of the previous minutes of the regular session dated January 14, 2025, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any corrections for their previous minutes? If there are none, Honorable Miones is recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to everyone.
Good afternoon.
I believe each member has a copy of the minutes dated January 14, 2025 during the second regular session of the Seventh City Council. Mr. Chair, if there is no proposed correction to the minutes, therefore I move for the adoption of the said minutes. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the adoption of our previous minutes dated January 14, 2025. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, these minutes are adopted. Please proceed to the next item.
For question, are no guests invited? Privilege hour and reports of observations.
Thank you. Privilege hours upon us. Are there any requests, observations by the members? Honorable Papio.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all.
Good afternoon.
Communication number 20, series of 2025, certified urgent, coming from the local chief executive. I ask permission to my colleague that this issue to be tackled during an assigned business without suspending house rule.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Papio that communication number 20 be tackled under an assigned business without the need to suspend house rules, certified urgent. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Dayang Hirang.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. My behalf on set and then.
My behalf on.
This representation, Mr. Presiding Officer, would like to request the members of this August body that communication number 21, certified urgent by the local chief executive be discussed under an assigned business without the need of suspending the house rules. This is regarding the request of the LCE authorizing her to... for a special use agreement in protected areas for the construction of water treatment facility within the Magsaysay area in Barangay Central, D.C., Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Dayang Hirang that communication 21, certified urgent, be tackled under an assigned business without the need to suspend house rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Capinha is recognized.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chair, three communications referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations Ways and Means, though not certified urgent, but in behalf of the committee, Mr. Chair, this manifestation would like to request the members of this August body that these three communications regarding barangay budget be tackled under an assigned business during suspended house rules for discussion and possible approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Capinha that communications 18, 19 and 22 be tackled under an assigned business under suspended house rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I think there are no more requests by the members. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed to the next item.
No proposed ordinance for first reading, no proposed resolution for first reading. Communication and messages, communication number 18, series 2025, referred to the Honorable Capinha, CMA Committee Finance. This pertains to the first endorsement from our city budget officer pertaining to the pre-reviewed Sangguyang Kabataan Annual Budget for calendar year 2025, Barangay Central, D.C. As manifested by the Honorable Capinha, this will be discussed under an assigned business, suspended house rules. Communication number 19, referred to the Honorable Capinha, CMA Committee Finance, with subject matter first endorsement from Mrs. Simaya Bagaidimpas, city budget officer pertaining to pre-reviewed supplemental budget number 02 of barangay calendar year 2024 of barangay Mamali, D.C., to be operative, to be discussed under an assigned business, suspended house rules. Communication number 20, series 2025, an urgent letter from Honorable Michelle Rabat, City Mayor, requesting the Honorable Members, with sangguyang pangungusod, for passage of a resolution authorizing City Mayor to sign for and behalf of the City Government of Mati, the memorandum of agreement between Hallmark Mining Corporation and the City Government of Mati for the improvement of nutritional well-being of the residents of geographically isolated and disadvantaged areas in barangay Selangka, Luban and Cabuyah, all of the city. Refer to the Honorable Papio, CMA Committee on Health and Sanitation. As manifested by the Honorable Papio, this will be discussed under an assigned business without need of suspending the house rules. Communication number 21, series 2025, an urgent letter from our local chief executive, Honorable Michelle Rabat, City Mayor, requesting the Honorable Members, sangguyang pangungusod, for passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to apply for special use agreement in protected areas for the construction of a water treatment facility within the Magsaysay area, barangay central, D.C. Refer to the Honorable Dayang Hirang, CMA Committee on Environmental Protection. As manifested by the Honorable Dayang Hirang, this will be discussed under an assigned business without need of suspending the house rules. Communication number 22, series 2025, refer to the Honorable Capinha, CMA Committee on Finance, pertaining to first endorsement letter from Mrs. Simaya Bagaidimpas, City Budget Officer, addressed to the Honorable Members, sangguyang pangungusod regarding pre-reviewed Sangguyang Kabataan Supplemental Budget Number 01 for calendar year 2024 of barangay Tagibo, D.C., to be operative, to be discussed under an assigned business, suspended house rules. Communication number 23, series 2025, this is for the information of the Honorable Body, Executive Order Number 01, Series of 2025, from Honorable Michelle Rabat, City Mayor, prescribing guidelines for mobile phone expenditures for calendar year 2025. Communication number 24, series 2025, for the information of the Honorable SP Members, this pertains to Executive Order Number 02, Series of 2025, from Honorable Michelle Rabat, City Mayor, dated January 6, 2025, providing guidelines for the observance of special non-working holidays of every year the City of Mati pursuant to Republic Act 11825. Communication number 25, series 2025, for the information of the Honorable Body, this pertains to Executive Order Number 03, Series of 2025, from Honorable Michelle Rabat, City Mayor, creating the technical working group tasked to develop and process the end mechanism for the selection of the mandatory representative of indigenous peoples to the sangguyang pangungusod of the City of Mati. For the information of the Honorable Body. Communication number 26, series 2025, this pertains to Executive Order Number 04, Series of 2025, amending various executive orders with the subject matter reorganizing and reconstitution of the local finance committee by updating its membership. For the information of the Honorable Body. Communication number 27, series 2025, for the information of the Honorable Body, pertaining to Executive Order Number 05, Series of 2025, prescribing guidelines for the operation of United Market adjacent to the Mayor Francisco G. Rabat Park and Baywalk until December 31, 2025. Communication number 28, series 2025, for the information of the Honorable Body, this pertains to Executive Order Number 06, Series of 2025, from Honorable Michelle Rabat, our City Mayor, creating the City of Mati Climate Change Committee. Communication number 25, series 2025, pertaining to Executive Order Number 07, Series of 2025, declaring suspension of classes last January 15, 2025. This is for the information of the Honorable Body. That's all for communications, Mr. Chair. For committee report, we have one committee report by the Honorable Campos. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Ah, okay. Honorable Campos is recognized. Sorry, Dayang Hirang.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. As chairperson of the Committee on Oversight, Ordinances and Legal Matters, I rise to present to you the committee report concerning the barangay ordinances number 14, 15, 16, 17 and 18, all series of 2024 of barangay Buso, City of Mati. And our committee has carefully reviewed the matter, conducted thorough deliberations and consulted with our stakeholders and partners with this committee. Its compliance and legal standards and alignments meets our needs and the needs of our constituents, especially in barangay Buso, Mr. Chair. In view of this, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of committee report number two, Series of 2025, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the adoption of committee report. Committee report number 02, Series of 2025. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by all the members. Are there any discussions? If there are no objections, committee report number 02, Series of 2025 is hereby adopted. Please proceed to the next item.
For calendar business, unfinished business, this is for the day for second reading. Proposed resolution product of committee report number 02 by the Honorable Campos.
Thank you. Honorable Campos is recognized.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Again, as chairperson on Committee on Oversight, Ordinances and Legal Matters, I rise to sponsor and move for the adoption of the following resolutions, Mr. Chair. The first resolution is resolution number... is the barangay ordinance number 14, Series of 2024 of barangay Buso, an ordinance enhancing the peace and order of the barangay through the functionality of the established security outpost in barangay Buso, City of Mati. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for a passage of a resolution. Members, a second her motion. Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried.
Next resolution, Mr. Chair. The resolution confirming the adoption and approval of barangay ordinance number 15, Series of 2024, entitled an ordinance mandating a monthly contribution of 100 pesos per household in barangay Buso, City of Mati, Dava Oriental, for the sustainable operation and maintenance of the barangay water supply and distribution system, Mr. Chair. I move for the adoption of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for a passage of a resolution. Members, a second her motion. Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections or discussions, this motion is carried. Please proceed.
Next resolution, Mr. Chair, is the resolution confirming the adoption and approval of barangay ordinance number 16, Series of 2024, entitled "The Resolution Confirming the Adoption and Approval of barangay ordinance number 16, Series of 2024, entitled "An Ordinance Revising the Tax Code Ordinance of barangay Buso, City of Mati, Dava Oriental." I move for the adoption of this resolution, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections or discussions, this motion is carried.
Next resolution, Mr. Chair. The resolution confirming the adoption and approval of barangay ordinance number 17, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Comprehensive Regulation for the Entry and Operation of Iteran Traders and Service Providers to Safeguard Resident Safety and Community Integrity in barangay Buso." Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections or discussions, this motion is carried.
For the last resolution, Mr. Chair, the resolution confirming the adoption and approval of barangay ordinance number 18, Series of 2024, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing the 31st Day of October of Every Year as Indigenous People Day in barangay Buso, City of Mati, Dava Oriental, to honor and celebrate the cultural heritage and traditions of the Mandaya and Kalagan or Kagan tribes and mandating the wearing of traditional attire by all tribal council members on this day." I move for the adoption of this resolution as well, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for a passage for a resolution. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections or further discussions, this motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all po.
Thank you. Please proceed to the next item.
No proposed ordinance for second reading for an assigned business. We have two urgent communications, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Miones is recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. In order to address the urgent request of the mayor, I move for the conversion of this August body into a committee as a whole. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body into a committee as a whole. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, we are now converted into committee as a whole. Honorable Papio is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Communication number 20, series of 2022, open for discussion.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding communication 20 as presented by the Honorable Papio. Are there any discussions? If there are none, please proceed.
I move for the adoption as committee as a whole. Recommendation, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Papio for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections nor discussions, this motion is carried. Honorable Dayang Hirang is...
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. The floor is now open for any discussion regarding communication number 21.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding communication 21 as presented by the Honorable Dayang Hirang regarding the water treatment systems, the dash two. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
I now move for... I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation regarding communication number 21. I so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Dayang Hirang for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for communication 21. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no discussions nor any objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Miones is recognized.
I move for the conversion of this August body back to plenary.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body back into plenary. Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, we are now back into plenary. Honorable Papio is recognized, followed by the Honorable Dayang Hirang.
In behalf of the Committee on Health and Sanitation, members, I move for the passage, a resolution authorizing Honorable Michelle and Rabat, City Mayor to enter into unsigned for in behalf of the City Government of Mati, the memorandum of agreement between the Hallmark Mining Corporation for the improvements of the nutritional well-being of the resident of the geographical isolated and disadvantaged area, Jida, barangay Langka, barangay Luban and barangay Cabuyah. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Papio for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no discussions nor any objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Dayang Hirang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Before the passage of the said resolution, Mr. Presiding Officer, the water treatment facility, Mr. Chair, is within the Puhad Bay Protected Area situated in Magsaysay area. I think dash one siguro to siya, dash one B. And there is a need for a special use agreement in protected area or SAPA, which is a prerequisite for the environmental compliance certificate application. And the main purpose of this facility is to treat the wastewater generated gikan sa mga establishment, ah, kabalayan, padulong dito sa dagat. Oh, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. On behalf of the members of the Committee on Environmental Protection, I now move for a passage of a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, the Honorable Michelle Nakpil Rabat, to apply for a special use agreement in protected areas or SAPA for the construction of a water treatment facility within the Magsaysay area, barangay central, D.C. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Dayang Hirang for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no discussions or objections, this motion is carried. Thank you. Yes, Honorable Dayang Hirang. Ah, to probably facilitate the non-urgent communications requested by the Honorable Capinha, Honorable Miones is...
Ah, Mr. Chair, I move for the suspension of the house rules. At the same time, the conversion of this August body once again into a committee as a whole. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the suspension of house rules. At the same time, the conversion of this body into a committee as a whole. Seconded by all members, I believe if there are no objections, we are now converted into committee as a whole and house rules are suspended. Honorable Capinha, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and Honorable Members of this August body, the communication number 18, communication number 19 and communication number 22, ah, since we are converted into committee as a whole, the floor now is open for any, ah, queries, discussions.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the three communications presented by Honorable Capinha. If there are none, please proceed, Honorable Capinha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in communication number 18, communication number 19 and communication number 22. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinha for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendations for three communications as presented. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections or discussions, these motions are carried. Honorable Miones is recognized.
I move for the conversion of this August body back to plenary.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body back into plenary. Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, we are now back into plenary. And Honorable Capinha is recognized. You may lump sum the passage, Honorable Capinha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for a passage of a resolution declaring the annual budget for year 2025 of the Sangguyang Kabataan of barangay central, this city to be operative. I now move for a passage of a resolution declaring supplemental budget number two for year 2024 of barangay Mamali, this city to be operative. I now move for a passage, a resolution declaring supplemental budget number one for year 2024 of the Sangguyang Kabataan of barangay Tagibo, this city to be operative. Mr. Chair, I now move for the passage of these three resolutions. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinha for the passage of three resolutions as presented. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since this is seconded, there are no discussions nor objections. These motions are carried. Honorable Miones is recognized.
I move for the lifting of the suspended house rules.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the lifting of suspended house rules. Members, a second his motion. Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, the suspended house rules are now lifted. Please proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
No proposed resolution and ordinance for third reading. Announcement, other matters.
Thank you. Are there any announcements, other matters by the members? Honorable Capinha is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, before the announcement, I just would like to greet a happy birthday in behalf of the Seventh City Council, the SP process server and our sound system operator, ah, Sir Go Young.
Sir, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Go. Now, and of course, Mr. Chair, just an announcement for the scheduled administrative hearing tomorrow, January 22, 2024, 2:00 p.m. at Session Hall. Attire for, ah, male is short sleeves barong and business attire for lady councillors.
Thank you for the update, Honorable Capinha. Please all be present tomorrow for the administrative hearing. Are there any more announcements or other matters? Honorable Valera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ah, this is with regards of previous communication number 397, Mr. Chair. Ah, drop ordinance number 620. Ah, to address this communication, Mr. Chair, I would like to inform this August body that this coming January 23 at 2:00 p.m. Decision Hall, we would, ah, we will having a committee meeting, Mr. Chair, to address this, ah, previous communication.
Thank you, Honorable Valera. Please send a letter to my office.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and especially the members, Mr. Chair, Honorable Gaita, Honorable Makaubos, Honorable Capinha, Honorable Dayang Hirang. And I would like also to request our... And I would like also to request our good vice secretary to invite the different gasoline station owner or any representative from them, so that we can discuss, ah, mukmayo, Mr. Chair, with regards of this proposed ordinance.
23, as a date, Colonel?
Thursday, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Valera. Maybe you can write the letter... send the letter today para ma dissemineta nato. Thank you. Are there any more announcements by the members? If there are none, please proceed with the next item.
Adjournment followed by closing prayer by Honorable...
Honorable Gaeta is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adjournment of today's session. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Rabat Gaeta for the adjournment of today's session. Seconded by all session adjourned. Please rise for the closing prayer.
In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, gracious and loving God, as we conclude this session, we thank you for your guidance and the wisdom shared here today. We pray that the... that the decisions made and that the resolutions passed serve the best interest of the people of Mati. Let our efforts bear fruit that promotes unity, progress, and prosperity within our city. As we leave this place, keep us mindful of our duty to serve with dedication and honesty. Continue to bless our city, its leaders, and all those who call it home. In your name we pray for strength and purpose. Amen.